Allegiance to the back of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on, just need a motion to approve. Motion for both.
I'll second.
Second is our action. All in favor? Seven oh Amy. I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda. If there's anything you need to abstain from, now's the time to do it. You have questions about anything, now's the time to ask, we can pull it out and ask.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for both.
Second.
Second for David. All in favor? Seven oh Amy. Moving on to presentations, we have the CTA. Ed Rock, who is the President of CTA. Ms. Wood's not here, but she's the Vice President. So we could introduce our new teachers and staff.
All right, we definitely want to welcome our new teachers. We're excited to have them join our school district this year in their various roles. And so if, when I call your name, if you will just stand and wave and give your favorite Disney character and why, and then you can sit down. I'm just joking. But if you would stand up so the board can recognize who you are, I know they've seen your names, but they haven't necessarily been able to put a face to those names. Maria Randall, which is middle school math slash music appreciation. We have Amber Bowlen, which is middle school, high school art. We have Julie Frazier, which is middle school, high school science. We have Caleb Erwagner, middle school and high school science as well. We have Heather Carvahal, which is high school English. And her husband Steve is our new athletic director. Ashley Coons is a para for us. Kathy Brown is one of our elementary teachers. We have Haley Barnes, which is our speech K through 12 therapist. We have Noah Pafford, which is elementary PE. We have Cheryl Meyer, which is joining us as a para, as well as Tabby Capps as a para. Toby here, I'm sorry. I knew I'd get one name. So, thank you.
Nice, welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
That's me. Periodically, we're looking at our strategic planning, that's our CSIP, comprehensive school improvement plan, excuse me, plan. And goal three, which is on that plan, deals with PBIS. We've done a really good job at the elementary, and we're now working on the middle school. Elementary's been gold level for the past few years, and that takes a lot to accomplish that. They have to be evaluated by an outside group. They actually have, they go in there and they actually interview kids, they talk about, they talk to teachers. They look at a lot of different data points to see that we're implementing that. I think one important thing to know about PBIS is that it takes constant maintenance, and you have to review it every year and try to get better. Doesn't mean all the discipline ends at all. Just means we have a system and everybody's involved in a process, and all of the teachers and students and parents are involved in that, and are working towards solutions. So, the overall goal being we keep kids in school longer and avoid just going directly to suspension all the time. So, on that note, just want to note that we have, I know we're coming up, so right to, because it fits right with our goals, so we're kind of monitoring this report. And, sorry, this, this goal. And also wanted to mention is that at the statewide meeting that we had in July with Desi, they did make mention of scoring us on our CSIP, because that's what Desi does. They like to score things that we do and let us know how we're doing. So, we'll actually be responding and telling them what kind of progress we're making on these goals. So, our CSIP is actually linked there. Members of the board, if you ever want to go back to that, it's actually on our website. It is required, and it did have to fast muster with a lot of what our action steps are and how we're progressing on those. So, I have to report, do the final reports and say, here's what's going on, here's what we're doing to accomplish so far. So, with that, Nancy Rogers, our PBIS consultant, you're up.
Okay. I just, I think I can talk loud enough for everybody. I would like to read something. This is going to be the elementary's presentation again of recognition. Tipton Elementary School has earned recognition once again for the tier three gold status. They continue to implement school-wide positive behavior strategies with much success. They implement their expectations daily with also recognition from staff for positive behavior and continue to teach behavior as a skill deficit just as relentlessly as they do academic skills. They use specific positive praise and have social groups along with check-in and check-out for those students needing extra attention with behavior. They have mastered completing functional behavior assessments, which is separate from special education. These assessments will drill down to pay attention to the student's function of behavior and develop a plan for them according to such. Safety plans have also been used for students who display the top five percent of students who need even more support with their deficit behaviors. The team at Tipton Elementary worked tirelessly to treat all students with respect and be as positive as possible so that all students succeed academically and socially. It's my pleasure to award Tipton Elementary with this highest recognition of implementation, and I want to say with fidelity. It is our honor to work with such an outstanding district who strives to accommodate all students. So, Ashley, if you have anybody else on your team this year?
This is Lawson, is here. She's our tier two interventionist.
Now Nancy, I did have one question. We went three of these, do we get a flat?
I'll have to ask the state.
I can take a picture.
Okay, yes.
With your help.
Thank you, congratulations.
Oh, did you get a picture of your?
Yeah. I'll put it on. It is on Twitter. Thank you. And I want to say I had a great PD with Jason's company today. And, you know, his staff did a great job all on listening to everything, and they're going to be implementing it with fidelity as well. I see them getting recognition next year, just coming here. Good job, even on your wheels.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next up is the Cardinal Foundation, and we have Blaze Bower here and Shay Henser, the architect of the building. And we'll also have, following them, Mark Hampton's here, and he's going to speak along with them after they're finished. And he'll give us some information, so I'm going to get their presentation out there.
Here you go, sir.
All right, perfect. Hello, everyone. It's good to be here and get to discuss a little bit of the indoor training facility proposal. It's exciting stuff. Just to jump in, this is our team. My name is Shay Henser, I'll be the designer for this facility. And we have Blaze behind me, which is business development for the project. And then there are two other guys, Andrew and Charlie, both working on the project estimation and pre-construction side of the project. So, this project was a little bit different for, you know, for my career, it's really fast-paced turnaround. We had just a few weeks to turn around and design, and I think the direction we're going is really flexible and pretty sharp. All right, so we'll get moving. Agenda is real simple, just program, schematic design, design images, and the next steps. So, when we say program, it's really basically a list of things that are a requirement, or things that we've heard. So, within that requirement, it's regulation-sized basketball court, turf area, sprint track, strength training area, or gym, storage area, restrooms, possibility, and then overhead door for moving equipment in and out. But another piece of architecture is the incidental program, which is also what other things the building can be used for. In the education field, Swiss Army knife type of buildings are key. It's what we call the incidental program. So, these other programs that could and probably will use the space would be wrestling, archery, volleyball, cheerleading, golf, and I'm sure there are others. So, schematic design, this is where we get to really understand how we arrived at the decisions we did. So, look at the site. North is straight up, we have the high school football field here in the center of the page, 50 highway cutting through there. And then over to the right side of the page, we have the upper field here. So, this was the proposed spot for the building somewhere in this general area. Now, we, looking at the south side of this site, we would use maybe more money, creating access, parking lots. There's a little bit of an issue getting to the site. So, moving to the north side of the site, which is the most accessible, cheapest spot to build, with a parking lot already built, we went that direction. And zooming in a little bit, having direct access to those two locations is pretty imperative. Only issue there is, is a little bit of grade change, which we had to work on access, needs to be accessible. So, shifting over to a little bit more of an artistic view, we can see the building location, its orientation schematically, and then that accessibility, or the accessible route, basically ramp, aligned straight with the football field as type of a runway, if you will, for the football team coming out of halftime. So, moving in closer and turning the page to left, or north is now left, this is a bubble diagram. This is the schematic way to represent the floor plan and how we're imagining this working. So, right off of Randolph, we have our overhead door loading dock area, free weight area, and then the weight racks, which would be the existing equipment that is already in place. And then the sprint track flex area, and the restrooms could be here to the south, which could help with game day load or occupancy. And then a regulation-sized court, which determines really the dimensions of the building. And then you see here to the far top side of the page is a mechanical pad for heating and cooling units. Okay, moving in closer, this is the first floor floor plan. You can see here the regulation-sized basketball court to the side. The necessary, the minimum warning track on one side, warning track on the other, a little bit wider, just off the front door. Now, we have the front door with restrooms on either side with two doors. Thinking about this restroom would be, we'll get into a little bit more, but you could use this on game day locking this door. Coming in, there's a straight turf track here. This is thirty, thirty-two yards here. And then, excuse me, and then the weight racks here to the side. Mezzanine is over this portion, you see the stairs here, loading dock, and then a small driveway. The overall size of the building, one thirty by one hundred. So, getting into the uses of the building, we're trying to be as flexible as we can. So, if I may, I'm going to go back real quick. This would be the base, what fits in the base estimate, essentially talking with the estimator. This program with just the shell of the building and these pragmatic elements would be part of that bond, would be that bond money. Would fit within the budget. Everything else I'm showing you are either infrastructure that can be added for the flexibility of the building, or already existing elements that are placed within the building. So, we have ceiling-mounted baseball batting cages, could be hung in this, over the turf track area to allow flexibility. Future room for three more weight racks if needed. A volleyball course in the middle of that basketball course. I do want to mention there are four basketball goals around the edge. There's also, there was also talk, meeting with some of the coaches and with everybody here, that there could be an element of needing bleachers in this area, depending on if you have games of some type. So, we do want to show an option where you do have those three bleachers right next to each other, about a hundred seats, maybe a little bit more, with a concrete concourse right in front of it and sitting on that turf. It'd be fine for them to sit on that turf, shouldn't hurt anything. The other part of that incidental use is wrestling. So, we wanted to make sure that we have space for two mats if needed on that court. Another one is archery. So, with this element, we're also using this turf. So, this turf is now a ruler in a way, to where lines can be stretched across from the turf, and it will indicate the, all the yardage required for archery, while still leaving four to five feet here in the back for targets and the necessary backdrop. There could be area here in this free weight area for a golf simulator and/or other equipment. And then band, we, talking with the band director, he said something that got stuck with me, which is we do everything between the thirty-fives. So, that was the goal with the turf width, is to ensure that we had at least between the thirty-fives. So, the width of the lines I'm showing now is between the thirty-fives. Each one of these are ten yards. And then there would be a yard on either side as access room. Restrooms, so I wanted to hit on this point just a little bit with the design, whether on the exterior and not on the interior. Being on the interior does cut into the square footage. And also during game day, if we have them here towards the existing parking lot, we can lock these doors when the building is not used. And the public could use these restrooms during game day if the load is high enough. It would be up to whoever's operating the building to open those doors or not. There are also, there was a need for changing space and use for athletes, use for athletes during the building, when the building's open, top of hours. So, we want to include these, just to get your thoughts on what these are, or if these are basically in the right spot, and if required. So, some of the other benefits of having these would be that integral vestibule, and then ADA accessible restroom off of that indoor training facility. Okay. I did talk about that mezzanine, so underneath this space would be the weight racks. So, there's about twenty-three hundred square foot of mezzanine space, which is quite a bit of storage, which was another thing we heard about, talking with some of the teachers. Now, this could be used for pretty much anything. Maybe it's not storage, maybe it could be offices in the future. Or have lockable storage cages in the future. Or we could also look at an opportunity where there is a wrestling mat that is able to stay in that position and be a dedicated space. So, before I get to the exterior images, are any questions?
How much room was between the edge of the basketball court and the wall? I know you said a...
Yeah, there's, there's about six foot there.
Six foot, okay.
Yeah, that's about the minimum we want to go. We'd really like to see ten, but trying to squeeze that down to the minimum so that we could get more turf was, was the name of the game there.
And there was concrete in between the turf and the court?
There was. So, when we're thinking about playing a basketball game, our awareness of the edge of the court is not a hundred percent all the time. So, making sure that we have a level surface from the court to another surface is a way to keep safety, student safety or athlete's safety. If we were to butt the turf straightly, straight to the court, which we could, it would leave an opportunity of a compressible material next to a court, which could lead to rolling an ankle, or sprained knee, or something of that manner. And we wanted to reduce the amount of wear on the turf from public traffic if you were to have bleachers in the building.
How much, the court except, like the sidelines, baseline, how much room is floor, gym floor leading into the concrete? If that makes sense. So, I mean, obviously, the sideline, inbound balls, whatever. How much of a gym floor is there?
Gym floor.
Right.
Like where your out-of-bound line would be compared to the edge of the building?
That's right, yeah. Where are the out-of-bound lines? That's very...
Yeah, out-of-bound line would be this wood court, right? Right there. So, the out-of-bound line would be on the edge of that wood. So, this would be a wood court within a concrete floor. If that makes sense.
So, for, so for example, if someone's going to inbound a basketball, we have a TRA game over there.
Right.
They would be standing on concrete.
They would be standing on concrete outside of that out-of-bound zone. Okay. Anyone else, before I move on? Look at some images real quick. Okay, perfect. So, exterior images, this is where we can get into the view of the building. I want to remind everybody that this is a quick turnaround, and there was a lot of development from the last time I saw everybody to now. So, we're going to start with a sketch image. So, if we are at the north side of the parking lot, just inside the gate, looking up on that hill. So, the stadium is behind this image. This will be the view that you see. We have the restrooms up front here, we have some windows into the gym space, and then an overhead door to the side. This profile, this mass, is usually the most cost-efficient, and talking about a pre-engineered metal building. So, we wanted to go that route. That doesn't mean that we can't look at some pretty awesome design features to break up this mass. So, how do we break up this mass using these lines? So, moving forward, we wanted to move with regulating lines and breaking down that mass, adding a nice red band, and above that leaving a white metal panel, which allows you to have a lot of signage on the upper portion, which would not be a part of the base estimate that we'd be providing if any of this, but it could be used for signage in the future. And then our red entry here to really designate where the front door is for anybody that might be joining. And then we switch to the south side of the parking lot. There's that ramp that I mentioned, would be the runway for the football team, or whatever team is using the track. They could run out this door, straight down that ramp, everybody could see them running towards the field. And it's also our accessible route for the building and for the restrooms. And then again, we have nice signage on the south side of the building towards 50 highway and over the extended field. Moving back to Randolph, this would be the loading dock area, really the backside of the building, but we didn't want it to feel too much like the backside of the building, so adding that signage there, adding the windows, makes it feel a little bit more transparent, be able to see in, see activity. You can see the stadium in the background there. Interior images, so we're moving inside the building, and we're going to be looking towards the north, which would be the gym side. So, as you're looking at this sketch image, this would be the estimated building portion. So, that estimate, or the budget, would cover this facility. And then these racks would be existing equipment. Then we go to color, we can see how we can add the batting cages in that come down from the ceiling. The mezzanine space that could be used for pretty much anything you need. The racks in the distance there. And then the twenty-two foot by thirty-two yard turf area. And you're seeing the warning track for the side of the court there. Switching to the other side would be the basketball court. See HVAC up here running along the outside of the building, so it'd be conditioned if we're using a wood floor. And we have opportunities to add pads at the end of the gym, and if needed, we can attach plywood to these girds to really protect the side of the building and the occupants using the court. But you can see that out-of-bound line there, if that answers your question, and then concrete around that. So, now we're moving to the east side of the building, looking north to the free weights area. This is an element that could be a lot more flexible, a lot of different workout equipment, exercise equipment, testing equipment, golf simulator, could really be anything. The only note would be that it would be lighter equipment, so that it could all be moved to one side or another to get things in and out of this twelve-foot by ten-foot door. And then lastly, here's a look at that loft in that mezzanine area, quite a bit of space up there. There is about five foot six here on the end, so it gets a little tight on the end, but here, there's almost eight foot on the wall itself. So, those are the images, I can go back to any one or any of the plan if needed, if I need to elaborate on anything. But that would be the design we have for you today.
The overhead door, that was an insulated door?
Yes, sir. Yep, we want to make sure, make sure and keep at least an R-12, R-13, to make sure that we can heat cool the building efficiently, without having to run the unit all the time. What else, any other questions?
Talking lighting?
Sorry?
Did you address any lighting in that vid?
Yes, lighting, lighting is included. How we want to, how we explain the estimating is if you could turn this building upside down and shake it, anything that doesn't fall out would be part of the building estimate. So, the batting cages, all the workout equipment, all that stuff would not be part of the estimate. But the building infrastructure, plumbing, lighting, doors and windows, the exterior material, insulation, lights, electrical, all of that is part of the estimation.
What were you thinking about external lighting?
Now, external lighting, there would be wall packs. We could include wall packs on all these corners, entry. There are, I don't have a night shot view, but there are lights underneath this soffit, so there's a little bit of an extension, so it'd be lights underneath here. Wouldn't be a wall pack view, it'd be a much more approachable entry at night that would light up this whole front side.
What about the ramp and everything?
So, we, there, we, in the current estimate, we don't have lighting along the ramp. We could look at ways to include that if we feel that we need to.
It's not very bright out in there. There are some lights on the end of the stands, the grandstands there, but we're not even sure that all of them are working.
Okay.
So, and how well they light up that away?
For sure. Yeah, we'd like solutions for that, a problem. Anything else? Pretty quiet, so I hope that's, that's good news from everyone. We're excited. This has been a really fun, fast project. So, if there are any, any other comments, please, please relate into the board, and then we'll find our way here, and we can do our best to accommodate. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Blaze, did you have anything you want to add?
Well, yeah, I always have something to add. I'm not the architect, but I've watched the two, three-year board meetings online, and I've watched the last one, my name's thrown out there quite a bit, so I feel like I probably should officially introduce myself. But I did want to say this, though, as far as this project, I'm a retired school superintendent for one year, and I shared this with the nonprofit group, and this district is very, very similar to the district I was in. We're a rural farm community, two-hundred-and-sixty-three square miles. And I'm going to tell you, as a... And I'm going to tell you as a board, and I also spend a little time looking, I do a lot of research on districts because I'm intrigued by it. And this, this district has very, made some good decisions financially. You can look at your budget, you can look at your finances. There's been some good leadership, good decisions. Also looked at that bond issue. I was tracking that bond issue you had last fall or spring. I thought that was a great project. I thought it was a great project because of use for kids. We did all these things in our district. We started off with a field and ours was right on campus. We didn't, we didn't call it a football field. We called it a place for kids. We had T-ball games on that field. We have all kinds of activities in football. Then we did an activity center like this with indoor courts. But I guess what I'm getting at is this, in a small rural community, and you do this well, I can see by the results and your leadership and your administrators and teachers and Dr. Robinson, you educate kids well, you provide resources well for kids, you give them what they need. But on the other side of education, what I've also learned is in small rural districts like ourselves, we have to compete for kids and families, if that makes sense. And if we don't, you kind of get left behind. That's the sad part of it. So I just look at opportunities like this. This is great for small rural communities. It's good for kids. It's good for education. It's good for commuting people, recruiting people to come into the community and keeping kids. Sometime when we, in the changing demographics, you know, things can change quick and if we don't change with them. So I applaud you for going or considering this. I think, and I'm going to be brutally honest with you, as was Visma Terry. To come back with a bond issue after one that didn't, didn't go the way you wanted it last spring and you come back with something more aggressive just tells me that there's some people in this community that, some strong leadership and some vision in this community. And I wish y'all luck in the world. And I think at the end of the day, you just got to know the pulse of the community and what the community needs. And you need to share the vision. Everybody's got to see the vision. But thank you for your time. And I do want to say too, Shay mentioned this too. This all came about, I think, the end of June, maybe. Typically, this is a period of time. And we came out and we met with the nonprofit group and some others. And they kind of said what they wanted. And then we got back with them and said, you can't have all that for this amount of money. It won't work. So then we had to redefine that. And literally before your last board meeting, I was on the phone with Terry like 30 minutes before the board meeting started going over things. They were on the phone all day with two or three other people and a couple of them in the audience explaining this. And then Shay came back and met with all the coaches that were there that day. And we just wanted to know, what do you need? What do you want? And I think he did a great job. He's not saying this will be an archery place, a wrestling place. No, it won't. You can't set up permanently for all those things. But you can utilize those things in that building. And that's what you have to decide what you want to do with it. I did ask him just right before the meeting, this wrestling room came up again. And I said, isn't he big enough for a wrestling mat? Yeah, it is. That's something you can consider. So you just, what you have is a building with some options of how you want to use it. Thank you.
Y'all have, to sell this, we're going to have to get some drawings and everything out to the community because I'm getting asked a lot of questions.
That's good. Yeah, for sure. So-
And they said, well, we want to see what we're going to be voting on here. So-
A hundred percent. Yeah.
You know, we've got to get some material out there if this has a chance of passing at all. I mean-
Yeah, that's really why we're here. We want to make sure that we're, the direction we have going now is the right direction that we feel. And then once, once we're thumbs up, we can deliver some of these renderings, these images for social media. We can have them in printouts. We can put them in the paper. Really anything we need to do. Once we get a direction nailed down, if we're good to go with anything, then we can move forward really quickly from this point.
Shay, I don't want us to speak for, well, I guess I am speaking for you. But at the end of the day, good thing for that, that time deal, this usually takes a period of time to get everything refined. We need to know from you exactly what you want that building to be so we can get you that final product. And we can get that out, like these renderings right here, you can put that on your social media too. You can get it out and go with it. But we need to know what the, what the final decision is, I guess. What do you want that building to be exactly?
Perfect. For sure.
I want it perfect.
Okay. Try my best.
You need, tell us what you need in the Air Force Department.
And then we'll get it. Just everything I want.
Well, thank you. With that being said, I mean, there's a couple of guys in the audience that you guys talked to and they're kind of, they're on this foundation. That's Andy and Caleb. I mean, in order to give these guys the direction, which I understand, we're the board, I understand that. But I think we got to work together. It's going to be collaborative. It's not just what we say goes. I think there needs to be open lines of communication and both parties work together. Is this something, did you all kind of hash this out? This is-
Well, also I think Shay did a excellent job. Whenever he met with all the coaches of the district, I think Shay, I think he took all the feedback that he received from them and put it into that, that size of a building is about as good as what we can. I know Mr. Cole Pepper was there at that meeting as well. And I, as far as the final design elements, we really haven't gone, oh, this is our first time seeing it as well. But, but yeah, I think, I mean, from what I'm seeing, it kind of hit on those, on the three most important things that each coach kind of told you they were wanting.
For sure. Yeah. And like I mentioned, we do have just a little bit of time. If we, if things need to flex one way or another, we can make those combinations very quickly. This is more of a direction. So-
But with that being said, we do need a point of contact sign on. When Shay gets these finalized, who's going to give this official stamp of approval? Ultimately, it's the board. But who's, who do we? You know, and typically that's, I mean, in my role, it was me as a superintendent. But we need a final source of contact approved for rent. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that is a nail on the head.
You know, I call Bill because Bill's the one who reached out to me through mutual acquaintance we had. You know, Bill's coached in football and it kind of did this. But again, it needs to go back, who's our point of contact strategically in school business? And it's a unique situation that y'all put up some money for them to do this. But typically, at the end of the day, it's your bond. It's the school district's running this deal. Needs to be the school district. Typically, that would normally be the superintendent. But we need a point of contact.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just want to be sure that we've gotten everything covered. It means kind of like Dana alluded to, do it one time, do it right one time. Just to be sure we have, you know what I'm saying? I just want to be sure that-
What was the, what was the exact floor dimension of the, does it mean like 44, 40 by 44? What was that?
Uh, let's see, I can go back in here. So our-
Because the big thing we talked about at coaches meeting was if we have a basketball court.
Right.
Do we have space beside the basketball court for a wrestling mat to stay down? If the mezzanine is big enough for a wrestling mat to stay down, that takes care of the wrestling mat's storage problem too.
And, right. And that, that was really the goal, I don't know what this thing's word. That was really the goal with, with the mezzanine is the versatility. So whether in the future you're using it for offices, for cages. But these bays are 20 foot. So that's a 40 foot mat would fit within that, that bay right there. Right? So that would be 40 feet.
What is that, about 67 feet long?
Yeah, yeah. About, about 60 foot here.
So still plenty of room for a mat plus 20 feet.
Right.
Or you could pull it away from the, where the beam goes down to 5'6".
Yes.
So you have to pull it this way a little bit?
You could, for sure. And there's even room if we want to, if we know, want to go more that direction. We may look at changing the orientation of the stairs to make sure that we can pull that mat as far as we can this way to ensure that we have that, that room to move. But we-
You're feeling beam grid north and south?
So the north would be this way. So yeah, east-west would be beams. Beam lines are these dotted lines here. Yeah.
You know, the biggest concern when I listen to the co, and I agree that wrestling mat would be nice if you laid down, leave it down, not have it rolled up.
Or at least they leave it down for a few days.
Kansas, we have split season. Middle school wrestling starts about October into Christmas in high school. If you let that mat down, you just wipe that four out for five, six months out of the year. You know what I mean?
Right, correct.
So that's, that, what I'm thinking, that's not real feasible. Even if you want that, that's, that can be a good option.
It wasn't feasible down on the turf or on the basketball court. That's more of a feasible option.
What about the area that doesn't have anything or the overhead doors? I mean, it's easy to move a mat.
It's like 40, what would that be, 40 by 40 there?
It would be very tight 40 going east to west. Yeah, not quite. The other consideration with that, I mean, we could move the mezzanine back just a little bit, cut a little bit of spare footage out of it to sure we could go maybe either, either spot. It depends on how much equipment ends up in that free weight zone. And if there are weight racks added in the future, that would cut down on that dimension enough that it would be too tight for a wrestling mat.
Does the foundation, have y'all picked out a crew to work with someone on the board, with some of us on the board? So that we can, you can say yes, we can say yes, kind of get things hashed out? I mean, last meeting, there was talk of trying to work together on this so that y'all get what you want. And then we can look at approving it?
Yeah, it's not so much, and I think you have members of the foundation here and that's why we're here. Then we'd be more than happy to sit down with the board members. And it's not necessarily anything that, that the foundation wants as far as the finished product. There's, we just, what, what we're looking for is the space for the kids for- Yeah, yeah. But I mean, just to help us, to help us, we'd be more than happy to sit down with the board to kind of go over everything and find the best utilization of the space that we can get. And yeah, I think-
Let's go back to my original statement when we argued about this here a while back. But back one time, no, we should have done that, so.
Well, I think there's a, we had to develop a board for the foundation to get the bylaws and to get going on that. But in talking about it, what we'd also like to do in, you know, refining some of the things and maybe those get into like the extras and things like that, is making sure that representatives from all of the different activities are included. So when we've had some other meetings, we've asked people specifically from archery, from band and music to be involved in those. So as this continues to move forward, I think we want to kind of, kind of revisit that. So any group that the board would want to talk to would have representation from all of the different activities to use the space so that we can make sure we're making it as good as we can for as many programs as possible. So I think we have a really good start, but probably just want to kind of firm that up and get a commitment from, from people from different areas to utilize it.
A hundred percent that. We're, to me, we're fast running out of time. And they're going to have to have time to knock out the final plans and then give them back to us. And then we get them out into the community so that, you know, we can get some support on this. Otherwise-
Well, this, this was our first one, Steve, and all seven, like we agreed together at the last meeting that you all would supply three and we would supply three people. And that would be a committee to narrow this down. Craig had kind of even offered that we can pick the three board members and discuss this. But yeah, we don't, you all had asked about throwing this out there to social media. I would hate to throw this picture right here to social media tonight or tomorrow. And then, you know, it says Tipton Cardinals on the end. In the long run, we don't know yet if we can afford the Tipton Cardinals sign on the end. You know, because we don't have everything narrowed down. It's kind of like the last project. We threw a bond issue out for a football field and a track. And it was, man, it was a beautiful picture, but we weren't getting any of that stuff in the final, when it was passed. You know, we were getting a turf field that was bare, had nothing on it besides the numbers. The track wasn't an all-weather track. It had narrow illegal lanes. It wasn't all-weather surface. It was just going to be asphalt. But the pictures, we thought we were going to have this huge, beautiful thing. But that's what we weren't, we weren't getting that. So-
If I may add, I think a meeting with this focused group would be good, especially once we have the full estimated estimation package, which I think that we can have next week and we can really sit down and look at every single number that is an estimate on the project based on what we've seen.
So I think we-
It's going to be hard to make any decisions on what we're changing until we see it itemized.
Yes. I think your group, David, of board members and our group from the foundation could sit down with them and then we could really start narrowing this down and removing things that maybe aren't necessary or adding something that we all do want to see, like lighting on the, make sure we have plenty of lighting for the handicapped accessible ramp, things like that.
Can you put more wind back up? I just can't apply.
I mean, I like the looks of this. I mean, it looks really great. Now, can we afford all this?
Well, that was my, that was my, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
That was my next question.
Blake, Shay, what, what budget were we kind of operating off of this? This, the full bonding bond?
The original expense was about 4.3 is what we heard.
Okay.
So we were in, we are, we are on track for that budget with this design.
Okay.
That does exclude, like I mentioned, all the equipment.
Yeah.
The, the other equipment and the exterior signage on the ends of the building, that would not be part of the estimation.
You can just kick that in.
We can try to find ways to do it. And that'll be part of that meeting if we can find some way to file down on something we maybe don't need. We chop, you know, six foot out of the mezzanine and that means signage, maybe that's something that we look into. So I think that we-
So you said the building is 100 by 130, right?
Yes, yep.
So your steel is on 20 foot centers?
Yeah, there's two bays that are 50.
There are two bays that are 50?
Yes.
What was the reasoning behind that?
15 bay, 15 bay. That's driven by the budget, one. And 20 foot bays are the most efficient for the girts. Girts come in 20 foot sticks.
No, I get that. I was just wondering why we were on 100 by 140.
Oh, yeah. That comes down to-
Because that gives you 10 more foot of turf.
And foundation and footings and steel and exterior insulation, lighting. So all of those things in the, in the 10 foot chunk push us over the budget. So we needed to stay 100 foot wide to ensure that we have regulation sized court with our warning runoff. And then we looked at how far we can stretch to go north-south. And 130 by 100 is where we landed. And that does include this restroom block down here, which is 10 by 50.
I agree with what Kelly is saying. I think originally the way this started, we'd love to see maybe something be reduced or gotten rid of so we can have a bigger turf area to be more usable for more sports and activities.
Are we looking just as much as we can get or is there a certain width we're trying to get with the turf?
No, I'm just, I mean, 22 feet doesn't seem like much turf, you know?
Can you get a line lined up on 22 feet? Can you get a football line lined up on 22 feet? Because I don't think we can and even, I mean, if we're going to-
There's going to be gaps.
Well, if we're going to use it for simulation for football practice.
Well, no, I mean, you're not going to do it for a practice just because we're simply, you know, not enough room. But for some simple walk-through and stuff like that, it'd still be tight for that, I would say.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I agree. I know it's too narrow to- We talked about a sport court as well.
Yeah, that's a wood floor there?
Yes.
So that'd be a reduction if we wanted to do that to sport tech floor?
Not necessarily.
No.
It, it, usually when we go to like a sport tech floor or rubber floor, Robbins, it's comparable or a wash to wood.
Because what you're going to have is you're going to lay that down in the concrete. So you're going to have-
They're recessed.
A recessed, yeah, which is extremely more high than the public surface.
Yeah, there was conversations of a plastic tile court. And you know, those, that would really reduce the usability of the court for games if you wanted to use that. We do have a lot of instances out in the field where we end up replacing those courts.
But this estimate includes heating and cooling.
It does.
So if we chose not to do that-
You lose your warranty for the floor.
But if you went with the sport tech floor?
They might also lose your warranty because they also base their warranty off of stable conditions. So it's difficult with the-
I know. Those were just some options that were thrown out last time. So-
I would like to comment on that too. And I visited with our coaches at that. I listened to your board meeting and said, I remember quote, Blaze said, you'll save a ton of money if you don't use a wood floor. The money savings is- The money savings is if you didn't do the air conditioning, which you didn't have to worry about the warranty. The savings is if you didn't have air conditioning in there, that's where the big savings was.
The schools for years didn't have air conditioning.
Yeah, whenever they had air conditioning.
For sure, yeah, I mean, it's just, it comes down to, yeah, if it, if you put it in and it buckles, then there's, there's no warranty for that.
What's the warranty on the board?
Uh, I believe warranty is ten to fifteen years, I think, I'll have to check with, uh, I'll wrap on that.
Now, the four point three, is that, you said with the restrooms up there?
Yes, yep. With that restroom wide.
How many other entry doors do we need to have? I know we don't really have code, but maybe for insurance reasons, I don't, just see two, three?
Uh, there is one here, double door set here, and a door there which meets our occupancy for the area. This is actually going to have to change, or probably should change, to a double door with a removable mullion so band can move in and out during game day, uh, would be the only things that I'm gonna need to make.
No increase in price, though, right?
No, that, no, that, that door opening of the doubles, we're small. Okay, well, this is, gives us good direction, we'll, uh, get the estimation pulled together, and we'll, uh, coordinate a focus group and we can discuss what, uh, what things can, can stay and go to get the optimized building.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hey, before we start with Mark.
Yeah.
Coach, what's your idea of what we're using for the weight room? I mean, if we have any ideas of what we're gonna do with that, will we, will we store it or?
If we max out our area here with using wrestling up top, which would be a better solution, then it would have to be storage, because like right now, we have no storage, and, uh, we lost what little storage we had in the cafeteria. Um, so right now, everybody pretty much, like, Hal has all the wrestling equipment in the trunk of his car. So that's our storage for wrestling right now, and everybody's the same across the board, it's not like somebody has storage. Yeah, and I'm sure we would, I'm sure we would probably reconfigure it a little bit, because we do have that one side door entry over there, um, kind of where the HVAC units are on the outside. So we could probably even put like a, a dummy wall up in there to make that forty feet by fifteen or something. And so then you'd still have some of that current old weight room that you could use as locker room space or something like that. Um, because we wouldn't need the whole forty by forty open room for storage. If we had a section of it for storage for track and for extra wrestling mat, something, it would be, you know, it'd be huge for us, you know, as far as storage goes. Then we could gain the elementary stage back, uh, we wouldn't have to use that for storage all the time.
Thank you. Mark?
Can you all hear me fine?
Okay.
I mean, the reason that I had, uh, I guess that I was here, it kind of dovetailed into everything that you all were just kind of talking about as far as time for this issue to be put in front of the voters. I was approached, uh, just kind of as, I don't know, as a citizen or a city official, just, you know, and the question was, it was the elephant in the room. You know, that, hey, the school's put up several bond issues in the past, and they haven't passed. And so they was just asking my opinion on maybe why that was so. And so I, you know, my affirmative or my positive to them was, was that the school isn't losing issues seventy to thirty. They're not losing issues sixty-five to thirty-five, okay? A lot of, especially like even on your last, even on this last tax levy that you all had put up, it would have taken a swing of just about twenty-five votes for that thing to have passed. So the sentiment that sometimes people might say that, oh, well, you know, Tipton did just, you know, maybe they don't support things. No, I think you all have a strong foundation of supporting this town. It's just, my answer to it was there needed to be a campaign, there needs to be a full-frontal campaign, not just, you know, a couple of Facebook posts. I know that as board members, I know from, just from the city side, you guys are a little bit bound to saying things, just giving specific information, I believe, is that?
As a school official.
As a school official, I mean, as-
They can, they can say what they wish.
They, you all could say what you wish, it's just a superintendent, okay, I knew that on the city side, like, if we put a proposal up, we can't say, you know, yay or nay, we can only give strict information purposes, okay? So tomorrow night, and this kind of dovetails into exactly what you were talking about. As far as your all's committee that gets together, we would probably need you all to hammer this thing down pretty quick as far as what you all are wanting to see. Because tomorrow night here at six o'clock, and I would encourage anybody to come to be part of it, because it will take all of us, okay? That we're gonna have a campaign, we're gonna try to do our best to put this thing out in front of the citizens to give them as much information, all facets of, of a serious campaign. Whether that be print media, whether that be direct mail, whether that be social media, whether that be community events. Community events are not just, you know, uh, how do I say, community events not just the basketball game. There's a community event every single day at the Tipton Nutrition Center. There's a, there's a community event every single day at the coffee shop where you, where you're, you're at. And so like I said, that's, that's kind of the, where we need to go with it, or that was why I was here, was just to, like I said, to kind of announce that, hey, that's, we're willing to support this, we're willing to do whatever we can to do it. Now, this is gonna be difficult, one, you have a, a very, like he kept alluding to, usually this is a longer process, okay? I usually tell people that, you know, if you're coming up with an idea, expect, you know, a, a year long, you know, six months to develop the idea, three months to get the troops together, and then three months to campaign. Well, we just don't have it right now, we're looking at probably, I think, eighty-five days, eighty-four days before your election, okay? So, and, the other side of it is, is it's also a presidential election, okay? Meaning that before, whenever we were running things in April, you could have probably passed an issue between two hundred and eighty to three hundred votes. That's all you're gonna need. Presidential election, you guys are gonna be looking somewhere around six hundred and fifty to eight hundred votes to get that thing passed. That's just, I'm sure the expected turnout, I thought maybe with just the presidential side on it, uh, maybe somebody would just, you know, we're a Republican county, I'm sure that, you know, the president that everybody wants to have, you know, that, that'll be passed on. But then yesterday, when the Secretary of State added, uh, kind of a right to choose or that issue to the ballot as well, it's going to be a hot, it'll be a hot ballot. I would expect the, uh, Robert to say somewhere around sixty-five, seventy percent turnout in November. So, like I said, it, it's an uphill, it's uphill climb, we're willing to go with you on it, I mean, but you don't need my vote. I mean, I've voted for every bond issue that you all, I've always put myself out there for that. I know sometimes maybe it's, maybe a political thing, somebody would say, well, Mark, you know, you're a city official, you might not want to, you know, put yourself in that type of a, don't put yourself in fifty-fifty issues. But I also understand as the mayor, as just as a citizen, that the success of the school is very beneficial to the success of our town. And it needs to move forward, and you all have a great idea. It really is a multipurpose building, it does, it touches everyone here. I mean, every, that's why I said every, I mean, I'm probably preaching to the choir right now, but, I mean, every activity, every coach or whatever, deck at FBLA, all of them will benefit from this, okay? So like I said, tomorrow night, it's at six o'clock, I'd welcome anybody that wants to come, if you can't come, send your spouse. Like I said, we will have a preliminary meeting, because, like I said, but as soon as you all can hammer this thing down and get us a final product, because you're right, you do not want to put out anything until we know exactly what it is. And I wouldn't feel comfortable asking people to go out to the public and say, you know, approach people and say to, because you don't know what you're talking about. Okay? That was it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Some extra down reports, everybody's got them, if you guys got any questions, looks like they're all ready to get the school started. Does anybody have anything, true?
Just real quick, did, Andy, do you guys have anything else? I'm not trying to stop, but.
I don't, I don't think so, no.
You're good.
Nothing for our administrators?
I do have a question, I know Steve's not here, but on the athletic director's side, I'm confused where it says, on the passes? Why does it say gold can't be in there?
That, well, he's just giving you an example of, of a conference school that put that sheet out.
They would let you, okay.
Yeah. Because like they have softball, baseball, and that one, too.
And that's how you're gonna do our season passes, then you break it down by sport?
No, no, he was just giving you an example of like-
What other schools?
Aligning with conference schools, like, we don't have baseball, softball charged for admission over there at the park. It was just aligned.
This is our pass.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The biggest change was the five dollar adult free for kids to go to the school.
It used to be four dollars?
It used to be four dollars in a football game, two dollars for kids, and then at basketball events and wrestling and volleyball, it was three and two. So the biggest change is free for kids, five for adults. It's kind of a wash if you have a family and you're coming to a game, and you're just trying to promote more, uh, you know, school spirit with bringing kids into the game with kids that maybe don't have the, the money to come to games. And, uh, you know, we're still gonna expect that, you know, kids come, you know, especially elementary school, are gonna have parents there, we're not gonna just open the doors to six hundred unsupervised kids, but-
Right.
That really won't change.
There's some rules on that. Right.
I was gonna ask about the, of the new shooting machine, is that under warranty, is there still some issues with that tab?
There's not any issues, whenever, uh, it has to be re, redone, and Ryan has been doing a lot of tech stuff, and I told him just to get it done sometime in the next few weeks, because we, it wasn't pressing to use it yet. So I told him to get all the pressing issues done, and then he needs to take it off of that machine, and then, I don't know, update the software, I don't know how it works exactly, but, well, it was just a software issue, he said that it probably just needed to have the software update.
Okay, we're on, old business approval of bond language?
This is the bond language based on, prior to seeing this presentation, I did put to our legal counsel and our municipal advisor, this is what came back. I tried to, uh, work with the lawyer, basically said we wanted to, wanted to express what we felt like the project was gonna be, and just talking to some of the cargo foundation, um, they had that multi, talking about multipurpose student activities building, and, you know, how that goes out to the public and what they're going to understand with some specifics in there. So you're naming some, uh, naming some, some activities that are gonna benefit from it, it's multipurpose, so there's a lot there. They suggested to put that with excess bond proceeds, I think what we learned tonight, not gonna be any excess bond proceeds, more than likely. Um, but you have to put that in there just in case, you know, maybe get some good bids or maybe-
The price of metal goes down all of a sudden, so.
Yeah, and, and I may add that, that in, in that estimation, there's gonna be contingencies that are added in. Generally, they're, generally, they're used, sometimes they're not. But we'll see more of what the contingencies will cover as we get the estimation together.
So as you get those things out to some, so, we, we need that language in there, somebody might stick on that and say, oh, you're gonna do something else to Central Office, so they're gonna say something like that, that's not what this is for, um, it's just existing facilities for kids. Add their, their language with what our current debt service levy is estimated to remain unchanged at a dollar eighty. Any questions on that, any concerns?
I should say in the indoor turf area?
Yeah, I wouldn't feel, because twenty-two feet ain't much of a field.
The word turf, I started field, area.
And do we want to remove that, uh, what Dr. Rob was talking about, that excess bond proceeds being used to improve the system? Still with ZELD, I mean, do we want that?
I think you keep it just in case you do have extra, right?
Or you pay back. That's what your lawyer recommended.
Yeah.
I really, I wouldn't throw any defusion of voters at this one.
Well, I think that the thing that you gotta think about is that this is gonna get potentially a structure, I, that, I want, I wanted to say that earlier, that would be my priority, is to make sure that the structure is right and the finishes can be done at any given time. So I think the language to cover the finishes, um, for example, wonder to add any more padding or exterior siding or whatever that may be, or not siding, signage, uh, on the outside, so, um-
You said plywood, that we would have to put additional plywood on the inside, like a scanned wall.
You, you could, if you-
That's not in that proposal.
Uh, no.
So it's just insulation, curtains?
Uh, we do have, I believe, uh, just the wall padding on the, underneath the basketball courts, it's part of the estimation. Uh, if we want, if you wanted to add plywood all the way around the side of the basketball court, that would be additional onto that estimate, uh, or in the later-
I'm just, I'm just curious whether or not that was part of it.
Yeah.
While we're talking about, do you want to add that to the building so that it's, we're gonna wait and see how the funding goes?
I don't see how you can have an open interior with kids practicing. You know, because all you're gonna have is exterior wall, insulation, and your curtains. If somebody trips and runs into it, which, I admit that happens, but if they go down, they're gonna take the insulation down with them. There, if they get involved, if we're using combative cages, I know there's gonna be a net, but those aren't guaranteed, you can argue. But I just think maybe it's not clear. And maybe that's something-
Cross every, if it gets, I'm interested in this.
Let's see what we change, I see, right? You moved the area, got it.
I guess just not maybe?
So we need to change this area, field, and change that to area?
Yeah.
Works for me, anybody else standing up?
Oh, has the motion, where's the, pass, oh, I looked at your sheet there.
Yeah, I was, I'm still looking at this, uh, language and-
So is there a reason the lawyer wants us to have that tackled?
Yeah, but if possible, she's just sitting there, and you have to use it for the project, so it's like the whole-
We can't, we can just return it?
You have the bonds out for it, somebody will do that, so you can say, hey, we'll-
They'll take it back, I can promise you that. I just, what I understand, I just feel, as a voter myself, you know, if we're gonna do building, you know, I think it, I don't know, it's my feeling, that you throw gray area in there, I want everybody to know exactly what the money is for, is for that building. If we throw that in the end, and I understand the lawyer, I'm just talking out. But I just feel it throws that gray area in that could cause doubt for the project. Just like you said, if, I'm gonna use Garrett, because he's right there, but if Garrett comes up and says, you know, out there, gonna use it to, you know, remodel Central Office, I don't want that doubt on the project period. And that's my worry, if we put that extra language in there. You know, if we say it's for the project period, there's no question from any voters that it's not gonna go into that project.
Dr. Rob, did you look at, did you tell us, you looked at Dell or somewhere, what their, what their-
Coach, did you look at theirs, probably talking about their, their facility?
Yeah, their question when they ran it.
I did not, I wish I did. If you guys don't want it on there, we can say excess proceeds used to ruin the facility apartment.
So if you had a hundred thousand left over, you could possibly put the baseball net up there, or whatever, but-
Interior walling.
Or interior walling.
I don't know, that's just my opinion, guys, I just, I see if we tap something on there, it just seems like a gray area that, you know, some, some voters may question. And I think if it's straightforward that it's going to be for that building, no matter what- And I think if it's straightforward that it's gonna be for that building no matter what, we eliminate any doubt.
The purpose of the law is for, so, yeah, I see that too.
I mean, your bond capacity is four million. Your assessment, right? That's four point three. So it's no gray area.
I mean, I understand there's no gray area, but you throw that doubt, that question in there, if we don't meet the question, then what's the work? Taking that language?
I think the, the only thing it does.
It's your little leeway in case, what if you take the bathrooms off?
Right.
And you're left with a hundred thousand.
I think we're overpromising and underdelivering then.
You gotta have, I'm just using.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying.
Or if you cut something out, you cut out the turf area or whatever the case may be, and you wind up with some funds left. You gotta be able to use those funds to improve your facilities.
I think, I think the way I would look at it is, in, in the likelihood of us coming significantly under budget is probably pretty small. But if we did, we, I think according to this, we are saying that. If, if we were to take that out, it would be, we would be obligated to use it on that building. When we may not necessarily have anything to do, although I don't see that as a, just likely scenario.
Nets, we can do interior walling, we can, you know, upgrade the insides a little bit. I mean, if we're, if somehow we come under a hundred thousand, if we could polish this thing up just a hair to make it a little better than what we promised, then.
I would be fine with, cause I, I had a problem with the, the word renovate anyway. But I would be fine with removing it too, to be honest.
What, what did you say? Uh, make further improvements to the facility? To make further improvements to the facility, which is referencing.
Well, I don't know if we need to, because those improvements would be covered by the word equipment.
I guess so. Okay, well, you got a motion. You wanna cut that off? Make a motion?
I made a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, cut that piece off.
Okay.
We're going.
Make the motion.
Hold on, shit, hang on here.
Derek made a motion. Thank you. And you second it. David.
I mean, okay, you got a motion on the floor here. All right, all in favor? Six oh. Did you vote, Ashley? Six oh, I'm in oh.
So we're just striking everything past the comma, right now.
Wait for our business specifics and our close-up basketball court. And with, with excess bond proceeds, blah, 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 a thousand, okay?
I think everything else will fall underneath constructing and equipment, so.
You should've been a lawyer.
I feel like I am.
Guys, we will need a forum on August twenty-second, because I have the, uh, paperwork prepared for this for Craig to sign tonight. So since this is gonna be changed, I'm going to have, it has to be filed by the twenty-seventh. So we're gonna meet on the twenty-second and we'll have the tax levy hearing and then we'll go into our regular meeting. So I need Craig to sign that paperwork. Or Craig to come by and sign that paperwork. As soon as I get back to the lawyer, cause I'm gonna have to tell him tomorrow. That's a little, a few day turnaround, so it depends on how busy they are. So I'll get it back from them, but.
Craig got this contacted, twenty, so I really have to prove it again. It's already approved, so I'll be.
I do appreciate the fact that I have a script to read here on my motion. There's not much, not much trust going on here on the things I'm supposed to say.
Well, that's because the lawyer hits me up and says, I want to see the resolutions board fast. So that's me looking out for you.
Yeah, we'll get presidential candidate on the teleprompter. Uh, all right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the ballot language presented in resolution to place on the ballot of bond issue to borrow four million dollars for the purpose of constructing and equipping multipurpose student activities building. The project will include a full-size basketball court, a weight room, and an indoor, indoor turf field for marching band, sports practices and physical education classes. And to evidence such borrowing by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the district in the amount of four million dollars. I think I would've said that right.
Turf area.
Turf area.
Turf area.
I still straightened up.
Yeah.
That's why I was still here to repeat that, not that.
Okay, do you want me to, I can restate that.
Correction. Correction, there.
All right, hold on, let me just do this.
Number two.
Take two.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion for us to prove the ballot language is presented in resolution to place on the ballot. Ballot of bond issue to borrow four million dollars for the purpose of constructing and equipping a multipurpose student activities building. A project which will include a full-size basketball court, a weight room, and indoor turf area for marching band, sports practices and physical education classes. And to evidence such borrowing by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the district in the amount of four million dollars.
So we got a motion to vote?
Second.
Second, but David. All in favor? Seven oh, eighty-seven. We have no in the business, so you're up to be on the big go.
Thanks. All right, I'd like to move into the executive session in pursuit of six one zero point zero two one to discuss three. And thirteen, um, to include, um, Jason.
So we got a motion, but Beau? Say goodbye, Amanda? Beau?
Yes.
Ashley. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so, yes, so, uh, thanks everybody for calling.